Thank you for your attention. Having been advised that a quorum of 100 is present, I call the town meeting for the town of West Boylston to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence in remembrance for our neighbors and friends who died since we last met and our brave men and women serving in the military around the world. Thank you, you may be seated. Anyone who is not a registered voter in the town of West Boylston, I'm going to ask you to sit on the far, my right, your left, in the first four rows, please. If you are advising a town board committee, you may sit with that committee, but otherwise, if you're not a registered voter in the town of West Boylston, I'm going to ask you to sit over there, please. On votes requiring a simple majority, we'll take a voice vote. If it's too close to call, we will use our cards. You should have received the card when you came in, looks like this. If we need to take account, we can take account. I'll try to call the vote if it's clear, if it's not, that's one count. If you do not get a card, please go get a card, and that's okay to do right now. You don't need a vendor or fold-it, spin or mutilated. As we progress, you'll see there are two microphones. You do not need to raise your hand in order to speak on a matter that is pending at that time. You can just come to the aisle, to the microphone. When you get there, you will need to identify yourself slowly and clearly, because the town clerk needs to write this down. So please, slowly and clearly, give your name and address within the town. If you are a non-resident, you need to identify yourself as a non-resident and ask permission to speak. Please confine your remarks only to the matter at hand, but we don't want to go far afield by sticking to each article and that text, that subject matter, that keeps things moving. The warrant articles have, for the most part, been proposed by the officials of the town and they deserve your thoughtful consideration, and the citizen petitions deserve your thoughtful consideration as well. We have a practice of, sort of a tradition of how we do town meeting. We don't follow Robert's Rules and Orders or other formal strictures, other requirements. Our tradition has stood us in good stead. I may refer to other materials, to supplement our materials. If a question or procedure does come up, I may run down the stairs and ask town council, probably more likely to do that. But our informality makes our town meeting ours, and so I ask your indulgence in that. I will try to cut off debate and comment at appropriate time, so let's keep things moving. Please, to keep it civil, direct your comments and questions through the moderator and not across the aisle or at someone. And if there's a town official or someone on a board or a committee that might have information that you're looking for, we'll get that referred to them so that they can respond in an orderly way. If you have a cellphone or other noise-making device, please silence it at this time. We want to keep things moving without the distractions. And at this time, a motion is in order to waive the reading of the remainder of the warrant and the return of service thereto and to refer to it as subject matter only. Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Very well. Article 1. This is authorization to hear the reports of officers and committees of the town. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to hear the reports of officers and standing committees of the town. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's hear from the officers and committees of the town.
Please do.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to recognize our retirees and significant anniversaries for some of our municipal employees. Okay, Staris, can you? Retirees: Sergeant Francis Glenn from the police department; Bonnie Yasik, treasure collector; Elizabeth Pichery, treasure collector, office clerk; Gary Johnson, library; Heidi Vernick, fire department; Alan Phillips, fire department; Helman Dexter, school department; Jean Robideau, school department; Susan Cassidy, school department; Don Morocco, school department; Lynn Pelton, school department; Carolyn Singer, school department; Anita Cypress, town administrator. I'd like to recognize Mike Hopple for 40 years with the fire department; I'd like to recognize Mike Kittredge for 25 years with the DPW; Rick Elberg for 25 years with the fire department; and Mark Hannah for 25 years with the fire department. Under 20 years, I'd like to recognize Sergeant Thomas Alvin of the police department; Mary Dera of the school department; Jennifer Klins, police, I mean, school department, excuse me; Sherri Traynor, school department. Under 15 years of service, I'd like to recognize Tim Shea of the DPW; Paul Osterberg of the DPW; Carrie Silver of the school department; and Rebecca Spencer of the school department. Under 10 years of service with the town, I'd like to recognize Colby Fisk of the fire department; Jesse Boucher of the fire department; Daniel Plant of the fire department; and Blake Perrin of the fire department; Carolyn Bransgomi of the school department; Charlene Brenner of school department; Liam Roberts of school department; and Christine Stratton of school department. Under the five-year category, I'd like to recognize Melanie Rich, administrative assistant to the planning board; Tim Benson, police department; Natasha Plumben, school department; William Bennett, DPW; Eric Mensing, DPW; Caitlin Conway, school department; Julian Foster, school department; Tracy Farquhar, school department; Mary Ann Carina, school department; Erin Clem, school department; Alicia McHugh, school department; Richard Marmar, school department; Bren Brian Stavelli, school department; and Kristen Tokas, school department. Thank you.
Any other town boards or committees would like to report?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Anna Shaw, I'm the director of the Beaman Memorial Public Library. The trustees of the library asked me to address town meeting this evening. I want to start with a big thank you to all of you who participated in our many fundraising events this spring. We are thankful to you for your used book donations and also for shopping at the Friends' Used Book Sale. Our first-ever very clean endowment fundraiser in celebration of National Library Workers' Day was a success, and we had a wonderful turnout at our library endowment enchanted evening silent auction fundraiser at the Mariner. The library relies on these fundraisers to pay for programming, guest speakers, supplies, and our popular museum pass program. The 2020 budget for the library, as proposed in this evening's warrant, fully meets the funding requirements for the Massachusetts State Law Surveying Public Libraries. It is important for our library to maintain this level of funding because it opens up a wealth of resources available through our inter-library loan network and reciprocal borrowing at other libraries throughout the region. It also gives the library access to grants and additional funding opportunities. I would like to invite all of you to join us this summer at the library. This year, the summer reading theme is space. As always, we will have a variety of summer reading programs and prizes for readers of all ages. Some of our programs include a presentation by the Aldrich Astronomical Society about the Apollo mission and the 50th anniversary of the first lunar landing. We will also have a space-themed movie series, we'll have yoga classes, book discussion groups for readers of all ages, an escape room program, Dungeons &amp; Dragons clubs for teens and adults, nature programs, and much more. Thanks to a gift from the College of the Holy Cross, we will be able to offer summer Saturday hours. This is year three of the program. Starting Saturday, June 1st, the library will be open on Saturdays during the summer from 9:00 a.m. till noon. These extra Saturday hours are a gift from the College of the Holy Cross, and we are so grateful to them for making these extended hours possible. I hope you will take advantage of these additional Saturday hours, and I look forward to seeing you at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark Freeden, 8-hour drive, what else am I supposed to say? I'm a citizen on the Economic Development Task Force, and I'd like to talk about the new signs that we're putting up. We put up a new gateway sign on the Boylston, West Boylston line on 140 North, and we are in the progress, process of putting another sign at 140 Southbound at the Sterling. We continue to work with local businesses to use them to advertise, encourage anybody, those businesses to come forward and submit into the lottery, and we're also, would like to keep working with any businesses in town that need them.
Since SWAT has a power point slide?
Give a slide for Solvus, as we think.
So SWAT had an audit done by Casella of our different neighborhoods each day, you know, the recycling truck goes around, I mean, the trash truck and the recycling component, and we had Casella sort out the different neighborhoods to see what the contamination rates were, so you could sort of see whatever day your trash is picked up on how we can do. SWAT is hoping to get like a 5% or lower contamination rate, so you can see the rates are between 3.1 and 11.6. So that was sort of interesting, the top five contaminants according to Casella when they look at our recycling bins or plastic bags and plastic wrap, sort of soil products like soil pizza boxes or paper towels and that is, textile, tanglers like Christmas tree lights or extension cords, and then scrap metal, awesome pants. And the most important thing to remember is just because something is recyclable doesn't mean it goes in your curbside recyclable bin. So it goes through the recycling center, or you can have it here, I don't have you, but it doesn't go in the bin. So that's an important point. The other, sort of avenue that SWAT is looking at to reduce the trash that goes into the landfill is a pink bag system, which is already being used in some towns. So we're researching to see how it would work for West Boylston, and basically, these people, SimpleRecycling.com, have free textile bag pickup, so the day you put out your trash is also the day you put out a free plastic pick, or pink bag for your textiles. And then that gets taken and replaced with another pink bag. So it would, you know, decrease the trash that goes into the landfill by at least to So that's an exciting new development. And lastly, we do have more free recycling bins that are right outside of the lobby. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees reporting tonight? Hearing none, let's move to Article 2. Authorization to borrow in anticipation of revenue and to enter into a compensating balance agreement with a bank. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant, leading the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Thank you. Is there an explanation?
This is standard annual authorization to borrow and authorization to grow the business banking services that are really needed and we have a good schedule with the pay bills we currently receive of banking services.
Thank you. Do any town boards or committees have an opinion they would like to render tonight?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you, any others? Very well. Is there any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. Let's call a question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Care is unanimous, thank you very much. The moderator appreciates unanimity when the problem is possible. Article 3. Authorization to expend funds in anticipation of reimbursement of state highway assistance aid. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, good evening. I move the town vote to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant, relating the words, or take any other action relating thereto.
Thank you, is there a second? Was there a second? Oh, thank you. Any explanation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This is a standard annual authorization to accept Chapter 90 funds and to borrow in anticipation of these funds. We are not needed to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement, as our staff is diligently in seeking timely reimbursement from the state.
Thank you. Any other presentation? Very well. Any town boards or committees have any opinion that they would like to render on this matter?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance, anyone else? Hearing none. We'll have question or comment from the public if there are any. You can come up to a microphone, and I ask that you get to the microphone and get right upon it, because it's a little hard to hear tonight, so. And when you come, please don't forget to identify yourself loudly and clearly for the town clerk to run it down. Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter from Yonkino, and reside at 17 Silly Drive.
Thank you.
And I may be out of place here, if I am, please excuse me, I have a request. Okay, my concern is the last two articles, okay, having to do with marijuana.
Okay, we're not discussing those until we get to them, I'm sorry.
I understand that. We have a lottery retiree here, they're going to be very tired by the end of the evening, I'm just asking if that's possible.
Welcome, we will try to expedite matters. Would you come to speak? Please confine your remarks to the matter at hand. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Susan Black.
If you need to raise that, feel free, or you can...
133 Hillside Village Drive. Out of courtesy, may I ask that speakers identify themselves, please?
Yes, that's... Do you mean the speakers in the front?
I do. I don't know who these people, no, I'm saying, as they speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you don't have a name card in front of you, I guess, if they aren't there, sorry. If you would be so kind, at least occasionally, to remind folks who you are, that has been requested, and I think that that's a reasonable request, and if you can accommodate, your moderator will appreciate that accommodation. So we're still on Article 3, I think. Any further comment on Article 3? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 3 passes. Unanimous. Article 4, which is authorization to amend the personnel bylaw and to amend the classification and compensation plan so as to provide employees a cost of living pay increase in fiscal year 2020 of 2%. Is there a motion?
There is, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I am Shabon Watson. I move the town vote to amend Section 5, Part AA, Classification and Compensation Plan of the Personnel Bylaw by amending the compensation plan table to reflect 2% cost of living adjustment for FY '20 as shown in the table presented and provided as a handle.
Second.
I'm sorry, where's the second? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Crowley. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Explanation, annual adjustment of wages for non-union employees.
Okay, and I understand there's, is there a slide? I'm behind it, so I can't see. Is there anything to be discussed from a town board or committee on the slide? Do any town boards or committees have an opinion they would like to render tonight?
Paul Anderson, the Bylaws Committee has voted to endorse this article.
Okay, bylaws and dorses, thank you. Any others? All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 4 passes, unanimous. Article 5. Authorization to set the salary of elected officials. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, good evening. My name is Patrick Crowley, a member of the Board of Selecting. I move the town vote to approve Article 5 as written in the warrant, leading the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ruchel, a second, thank you. Explanation or presentation?
This is the annual article that we have every year in order to authorize the salary of the elected officials in town.
Thank you. Any town boards or committees care to opine? Hearing none, is there any discussion of the article? All right, go ahead.
My name is Diana Englepart, in 68 Owen Street. And I have a question. There's a very large discrepancy between members of the Municipal Light Board and everybody else. Why is that?
Okay, there's a question. Is there anyone from the town who knows an answer to that question?
The Municipal Light Board is an elected body, and they have their own meeting, and their salaries set at their meeting. The rest of the elected officials have decided to take a nominal salary of $1, which we thought was a great deal.
So it's a decision made by the various people?
The Light Board.
Well, you said that it was a decision by the moderator, the SWAT and the planning board, and the cemetery trustees to accept a dollar each.
It was, the history of that is back in 2008 timeframe, when the town had, was in very bad financial situation, there were laying off teachers and other town employees. The salaries were reduced from whatever they were at that point, and they have never been adjusted upward again. Okay, that's great, that's great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 5 passes. Article 6. Authorization to transfer unexpended funds from fiscal year 2019 appropriations. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm Christopher Ruchel. I move the town vote to transfer the following unexpected balances of fiscal year 2019 appropriations and any other available funds as stated in fiscal year 2019 appropriation account.
Second, I'm sorry.
The hours follows. This is coming from the account, I'll read first. Group Health Insurance, $6,080 will go to snow removal salaries and wages. Group Health Insurance premiums, $22,990 will go to snow removal purchase services. Group Health Insurance premiums, $20488 will go to snow removal supplies. DPW salaries and wages, $7,000 will go to DPW purchase services. Facility management, other charges, $1,200 will go to DPW purchase services. DPW salaries and wages, $3,000 will go to municipal gasoline and fuel. Police salaries, $3,200 will go to police training. Police salaries, $15,000 will go to police supplies. Treasurers, purchase services, $11,000 will go to treasurers, salaries and wages. Interest on temporary loans will go to maturing debt principal, I'm sorry, that was $15,000. Veterans benefits, $18,000. Aid to one's supplies, $1,000. Fire purchase services, $3,000. Emergency management purchase services, $1,000. Emergency management supplies will go to fire, salaries and wages, that's $25,000. Library salaries and wages, $1,500 will go to library purchase services. Facility management purchase services of $30,000 will go to town council. Town accountant purchase services will go to medic here, town chair, $2,500.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
This is an annual authorization to transfer money to cover deficiencies in some accounts with excess balances and other. Questions about specifics accounts can be directed to the town administrator.
Very well. Town boards and committees, any opinions to offer on this article?
River Call, Finance Committee, recommend approval.
Thank you, any others? Hearing none, is there any discussion of the article? Ms. Minders?
Mr. Moderator, I'm Sandy Minders, 20 May Street. I have a question on the first line, could you go back so that I can see it as I'm asking my question? It says that we're going to transfer $15,000 to police supplies. Can I get some explanation, what happened, or is that related to the fact that we have a new police station, or is it some other kind of unanticipated expense?
So there is an indication that Ms. Lucier might have that information, so...
Okay, and the answer to that is due to hiring of new officers. We, our supply budget has a shortfall for the cost of outfitting the new officers with uniforms and equipment.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 6 passes, thank you. Article 7. This is an authorization to pay bills from a previous fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, John Hadley, I move the town vote to pass over Article 7.
Very well.
Second.
That's been seconded. I don't believe we debate. Motion to pass over, correct? Thank you. All right. There's a motion to pass over Article 7. All in favor of passing over Article 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 7 is passed over. Article 8. Authorization to appropriate money to the sewer enterprise account for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bardo Arjistuma. I move the town, to town vote to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant, relating the words, or take any other action relating thereto.
Is there a second? Mr. Hadley, seconds, thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This is an annual appropriation of expected sewer revenues and the available sewer funds to offset the cost of running the sewer system and related costs in FY '20. The sewer enterprise fund is separate from the town annual operating budget, and it must be a self-funding account in which sewer billing revenues and available funds must cover all expenses associated with the sewer operations each year.
Thank you. Any town board committees want to opine on that?
Yes, River Call, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this article, but we felt it's important to offer clarification. It's important that the town understands that the budget being voted on includes a rate increase, which is one of a series of rate increases. increase, which is one of a series of rate increases that will eventually balance the incoming expenses of sewer enterprises.
Thank you. Any others? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article eight passes. Article nine. Fiscal year two thousand twenty omnibus budget appropriation article. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm still Patrick Crowley. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars as printed in the town meeting warrants necessary for defray the expenses and charges of the town of West Boylston in fiscal year two thousand twenty, the period of July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, including the cost of public education, debt and interest payments, and providing municipal services, and reduce the tax rate by transferring the following sums. Raise and appropriate twenty-four million, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars from W B P A receipts reserved, fifty-five thousand, five hundred fifty dollars, from ambulance receipts reserved, three hundred thousand dollars, from Wachusett EMS fund, eighteen thousand dollars, from free cash, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, for a total as stated before of twenty-five million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a presentation or explanation?
This is the annual budget that we're asking you to pass, and the town administrator can speak to any of the individual line items that you may have questions.
I'm going to ask you to hold on just a moment. Thank you for bearing with me, I'll ask your indulgence just a bit longer. Thank you for your patience. We have a tradition of reading the line items in, and I got to the page and I didn't have the itemization, so thank you for your patience. This is in the back of the warrant, if you want to follow along. Total moderator is fifty-one dollars. Total selectmen, six thousand fifty-five dollars. Town administrator, one hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'm sorry, that's two thousand nineteen. Let me correct myself, I should be reading the two thousand twenty column, my error. Moderator, fifty-one dollars. Selectmen, six thousand fifty-five dollars. Town administrator, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars. Finance committee, thirty-two thousand dollars. Town accountant, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars. Town audit, thirty-four thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. Assessors, one hundred two thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars. Treasurer collector, two hundred six thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. Town council, eighty thousand. Data processing, one hundred thirty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Town clerk, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars. Elections and registrations, twenty-five thousand, six hundred ten. Conservation, one thousand eight hundred. Planning board, four thousand. Zoning Board of Appeals, three thousand. Public safety headquarters, forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty. Town hall building, seventy-three thousand, two hundred eighty. Printing and town report, eight hundred. P E G T V, fifty-five thousand, five hundred fifty. Facilities management, thirty-two thousand. And the total in that subcategory of general government is one million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars. Continuing on. Police, one million, seven hundred thousand, five... at nine hundred thirty-four dollars? I'm sorry, seven hundred five thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars. Fire, nine hundred twelve thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars. Public safety communications, one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Building inspector, ninety thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. Sealer of weights, one thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Emergency management, eight thousand dollars. Animal control, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Total public safety, two million, nine hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Next category is education, twelve million, four hundred three thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. Continuing on, streets and parks, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars. Snow removal, one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Street lighting, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. Trash removal and tipping, four hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Cemetery, one hundred six thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. For total in public works, one million, five hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Continuing on. Board of Health, nine thousand. Council on Aging, one hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven. Veteran Services, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars. Total for the subcategory of Human Services, two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars. Continuing on, library, four hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars. Celebrations, one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Total Culture and Recreation, four hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars. We've got debt service in the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred one dollars. Intergovernmental at six thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Employee benefits and risk management, five million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars. ESCO lease payment, two hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred four dollars. Total in this other category, six million, six hundred nine thousand, twenty-six dollars, for a grand total of twenty-five million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-three. Thank you for your patience while we go through the line items. Don't want anyone to be taken unawares and mislead the mark. Did I ask the town boards and committees if they have anything to... If I did, I apologize for asking again, but I'm asking again.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of this article.
Thank you.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any others? Any discussion?
I am still Diana Englepart, and I still live at sixty-eight Bowman Street.
Thank you.
I noticed that the education item is over twelve million dollars. There's also been said that the student population has been declining. Is there somewhere a side-by-side cost analysis, year-to-year, of comparing student populations and expenses? And if there is such a thing, where am I going to find it?
Okay, is there anyone from the town who has this information or knows where to find it?
Mr. Chair, I'm Elizabeth Shabbart, Superintendent of Schools, I'm happy to answer that question.
Please do.
All of that information is available on the Department of Education, Massachusetts Department of Education website, it's www.doe.mass.edu.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, Article nine is passed. Thank you very much. Article ten, To Appropriate Funds for Capital Improvement Purchases. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I am still River Call, but at the moment I am speaking as Chair of the Capital Investment Board. I move the town vote to purchase or enter the contract for the following capital items by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and if not purchased or leased by that date, or if any funds remain after said purchase or lease, the funds shall be returned to the source in which they were appropriated, with each appropriation being treated as a separate item. Item A, three stainless steel dump bodies, amount one hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred forty dollars, source of appropriation, capital investment. Item B, DPW stainless steel material spreader, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, also from the capital investment.
Second.
I'm sorry, where was the second? Mr. Reddish, thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Yes, I'm happy to provide a brief explanation. The DPW may want to chime in with a few comments. The three major pieces of equipment for snow removal, the dump bodies are in terrible condition and need to be replaced. A review of the cost for repair showed that this is by far a more economical solution, and we chose to reconsider funding out of the capital investment fund, whether that was beneficial.
Thank you. Any town boards or committees care to render an opinion on this tonight?
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Any others?
Capital Investment Board and Finance Committee recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Any others? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you. That actually required a two-thirds vote, I'll tell you that next time. However, unanimous, and not unanimous for the record, covers it. Article eleven, Which, if passed, will require a two-thirds majority.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
The articles moved that each of these was to be treated as a separate appropriation, so it went to one vote, I don't know whether we need to take two, because it did say it's a separate appropriation in each article.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, that's a good point. Just a moment. Thank you for raising the issue. The fact that the appropriations are separate does not require a separate motion for each one, so thank you very much. If someone wanted to move to divide the article, we could do that, but nobody did. Moving on to Article eleven, Which, by the way, does require a two-thirds majority for authorization to purchase equipment for the new fire truck. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to borrow the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars to purchase equipment for the new fire truck and any costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen to borrow all or a portion of said sum under General Law Chapter Forty-four and/or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore, and any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes. If it applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law Forty-four, Section Twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ruccio, seconds. Any explanation or presentation?
We have a new fire truck that the equipment from the old fire truck is not compatible, so this is to fully outfit the fire truck, and any additional comments, any additional questions can be answered by the fire chief.
Thank you. Town boards or committees, any recommendations or opinions?
Finance Committee and Capital Investment Board recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Select Board recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Any discussion?
My name's Tom Moos, I'm the fire chief here in town. The equipment that we're looking to replace are ten items, they're over twenty to twenty-five years old. It's not so much that the tools do not work, the technology has changed, they've gone from hydraulic and electric down to battery operated, and the lack of staffing, the equipment's much easier for us to handle with a new example.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous is better than two-thirds, thank you. Article twelve, Authorization to Purchase Salt Spreader Speed Controls for DPW Trucks. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Ruccio, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of fourteen thousand from free cash to purchase salt spreader speed controls for the DPW plow trucks, and costs incidental or related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley, for seconding. Is there an explanation or presentation?
This is a control that's put on the plow trucks to control the amount of salt that falls, so when the truck slows down, the salt slows down. Any other questions you may have, more technical, the answer of DPW Director is here.
Okay. Town boards or committees, recommendations, opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others?
Board of Selectmen voted to endorse this article.
Selectmen endorsed it, thank you very much, Mr. Ruccio. Any discussion? Mr. Callahan?
Thank you, Gary Callahan, Tom Westbrose, DPW. Just to give everyone a few facts and figures, I know it seemed like we spent a lot of money on stainless steel bodies and now controls, so I wanted to let folks know, the controls we have now in trucks are simply on and off, there's no control to them. They're set, and they're just on and off, and anything you see in the wetter time, in intersections, you see a little swap or grab of salt. So I just wanted to give you a couple of facts and figures. You've got approximately fifty road miles, that five hundred pounds per lane mile, which is pretty much the average of what small town America spreads, that's about twenty-five thousand pounds, and I have to multiply that by two, because that is based on a per-lane spread. So that, and you divide that again by two thousand, that's twenty-five ton of salt you're spreading, it's sixty-one dollars a ton, per application now, about fifteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's just five hundred. Now, sensible salting is supposed to be mandated, two hundred and forty pounds per ton. So if we do that math again, it's about twelve thousand pounds, by two is twenty-four thousand pounds, divided by two thousand is twelve pounds, that's sixty-one dollars, equals seven hundred and thirty dollars per application. So that's a savings of about eight hundred dollars per application, and so everyone knows the cost of these controls is fourteen thousand dollars, year one, on two applications... Year one, on two application per stall rate, with the average of 24 stones per season, you will save $19,200. But the more things with these spreaders which are controlled by ground speed and RPM. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 12 passes. Before I get to Article 13, if I can impose on somebody sitting near a microphone, if you could loosen that knob in the middle and raise the microphone, I think people are having to bend over at kind of funny angles, and it's hard to hear them. So if you're sure, I'm sorry, we're not discriminating against you. I've just noticed that I think everybody who's come up to the microphone is kind of bent over, and I don't want anybody to sprain their back just because they wanted to speak at a town meeting. So, thank you very much. If it's through the eye, lower it, that's okay. You don't need to get moderator's number or something like that. Article 13, Authorization to Purchase Software to Upgrade the Assessor's IT System. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, John Hadley. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,500 from free cash for a software, convergent software licensed, to be used by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Moderator, the Board of Assessors voted in 2017 to move forward with the conversion from Vision 6.5 to Vision 8, as the company announced. There's underlying Microsoft and Oracle license issues that would make the support of Vision 6.5 possible only in the year 2020. Do you apply for grants to cover this process or would not succeed?
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. Town boards or committees? Any recommendations or comments?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Any discussion of this article? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you very much. 13 passes. Article 14, To Reduce Eligibility Age for Exemption Qualification. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 14. As printed in the warrant, deleting the words or taking any other action relative thereto.
Okay. Seconded, Mr. Hadley, thank you. If you could get the microphone really close, it's a little hard to hear you. If you would like to explain or present, that would be a great time. Please do.
Yes. Currently, we have 1,756 residents in this age bracket, and only 21 qualify for $1,000 exemption.
Okay. Do any town boards or committees have a comment or recommendation they'd like to make? Hearing none. Any discussion of this article?
Hi, Andrew Feehan, 101 Central Street. I just, what's going to be the net effect on the tax revenues? So if 1,750 people take a $1,000 exemption, does the tax revenue stay the same? Does everyone else's taxes go up to compensate?
Good question. Is there anyone from the town who knows the answer or where to find that?
There's only 21 people that are eligible for the exemption as of right now. There's 1,756 that are of the age to be eligible. It's a two-part eligibility. It's an age and an income. As far as the tax implications, I'll ask it right now.
Next slide.
So just to recap, the question that's pending is, if there's an exemption granted, does that reduce the total tax revenue? Or does the tax revenue stay the same? And because of the exemption granted to the 21 or however many people who qualify, do everyone else's taxes rise? Have I restated your question correctly, Mr. Feehan?
Yes, and just to clarify, are we actually, so are we talking about 21 people? Are we talking about 1,756 people?
Talking about 21 people, so. They were eligible right now. So it's $21,000.
But I mean under the new language.
It's hard to tell how many people qualify.
So where did we get the number that Raj just quoted?
There were 21 eligible.
Now.
Under the new language? You did just say 1,756 people in this age bracket, right?
Under the current age of 75 to 71, the asset limit below, there are 1,756 people in this category. Of those people, only 21 people qualify with the age and the requirement. We don't know many other people within 65 to 70 will be eligible meeting these guidelines.
So we don't know what the impact's going to be?
Correct. The exact impact.
So, let's say 1,000 people are eligible. Does the tax, does the revenue level stay flat?
Honestly, I can't believe that there's going to be 1,000 people that are going to be.
Just as I had the question, what happens to the town's revenue if we pass this article?
The interest, yes, if there were 1,000 people eligible. But that's not the demography of this town.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
Turn me in an idea of.
This is, I mean, there's 21, you add, take five years off. I can't imagine that if, even if it doubled to 42 people. This is extremely low-income seniors that live in this town. Most of them probably have lived in this town most of their life. That's why they can stay in their house. We're just trying to let them be able to stay in their house.
Okay, yeah, no. All for that, I just wanted to get an idea of what the rolling back was going to be.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 14 passes. Article 15, Authorization to Appropriate Funds to the Unemployment Trust Fund. Is there a motion?
Yes, Moderator. Hi, I'm Siobhan Bonson again. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from free cash to the Unemployment Trust Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley? Thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
We need to replenish this fund, which we use to pay our unemployment assessments when they exceed the budget appropriation.
Thank you. Town boards or committees? Any recommendations or opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance. Anyone else? Hearing none. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 15 passes. Article 16, Authorization to Reappropriate Surplus Bond Proceeds. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 16, as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mr. Ruccio seconds. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Yes, we have three projects which are complete, and we want to reappropriate the surplus in these previously approved projects and use it to pay down the senior center before we go out for final bonding. And you have to act on this at this town meeting, because we anticipate the final bonding for the senior center project will happen in mid-August. There is also a blue, more detailed explanation in your handout packets. If you have any further questions, the town accountant has additional information on these that she can answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Town boards or committees? Recommendations or opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you.
Board of Select recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 16 passes. Article 17, Appropriation to Fund an Elderly Community Services Program. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, John Hadley. I move the town approve Article 17, as printed in the warrant, and submit, substitute the words "relevant" with the words "free cash", delete the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there an explanation or presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I'm Steve Clark, we're the director of this council on Heding. This program is a workout program for property owners in the town that can work in various departments of the town to offset real estate taxes.
Thank you very much. Town boards and committees?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance. Anyone else? Any comment from the public?
Diana Haywood. The article as written states that qualified seniors will be paid $10 an hour for their work. The current minimum wage in Massachusetts is $10 an hour. Why is it that we are paying seniors some minimum wages?
Yes, please do.
Municipalities are not subject to minimum wage requirements. And last year it was $9, and we did bring it up to $10.
Thank you. Any further discussion of this article? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 17 passes. Article 18, Departmental Revolving Funds. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Christopher Ruccio. I move the town approve Article 18, as printed in the warrant, and deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley, for seconding. Is there an explanation or a presentation?
This is an annual article to reestablish our revolving funds and their spending limits.
Okay. Town boards and committees? Any thoughts, comments, recommendations?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance. Any others? Any discussion from the public?
Sandy Myers, 20 Maple Street. I have just a couple of questions. Can we get an indication if any of these fund limits have changed from the prior fiscal year? I saw ESCO in the budget, and I didn't know what it was. And I see it here, and I still don't know what it is.
Thank you. Can anyone from the town answer these questions?
We'll get you the answer on the limits in a second. The ESCO is the, that was the repairs that were done throughout the town, mostly at the schools, energy efficiency repairs. And there's a law within the state that says you can use the savings from those energy efficiency projects to fund the bond that you get for that project without actually having to go out to bond. So that's what the amount that was in there. The $60,000 that's in the, or the spending limit of $60,000 for the ESCO funds, there was a $50,000 rebate that was received from the gas company when we did the conversion. That went into this revolving fund and has been historically used to pay for the monitoring, to verify that the savings that we are, or told we were going to receive are what we actually received.
We have two changes in our spending limits. The first one is for the hazardous mitigation line item, and that went from $10,000 to $25,000, to give it a more realistic figure, what might need to be spent. And the other one is the Beaman Memorial Library, which went from $15,000 to $25,000. Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion of this article? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 18 passes. Article 19, Authorization to Appropriate Funds to Community Preservation Fund Revenues. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Mr. Moderator. My name is Steve Blake, 53, Washington Drive. I move that the town approve Article 19, as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ruccio has seconded. Is there any explanation or presentation?
This is required by statute. We have to set aside annual appropriation, that's going to be CPK, Robin Oles, for community preservation fund categories. There's three different categories.
Thank you. I'll ask if you can speak more directly into the microphone.
I'm going to lie.
Well, I knew that was going to happen. You can hold it if you need to.
Any questions?
Town boards or committees? Any recommendations or opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance. Anyone else? Hearing none. Any discussion from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Article 19 is approved. Article 20, Transfer of Cemetery Funds. Do we have a motion?
Hi, my name's Joe Comick. I'm chairman of the cemetery board. I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,000 from the sale of lots account for the purchase of a Walker zero-turn lawn mower.
Second.
Thank you, where was the second? Thank you, Mr. Bonson. Is there any explanation or presentation necessary? Okay.
Basically, what we're doing, we're getting rid of a 10-year-old lawn mower that used to be used basically by people who went on their own house. They would go to a commercial mall. They would last longer. There was law pumps and things in there. A motor in a regular lawn mower lasts about $1,000. And we're close to that now, and the one we have, that was a, you know, homeowners, when we thought it was saving money. Well, that we know, you have to buy a new motor for $2,000. So it just doesn't make any sense to keep throwing money out the back. We asked for a trade-in on the mower that we have, and they gave us all $200 for it. It's not worth putting it in the newspaper. So frankly, what we'll do is receive it to the real account department that needs it. They can burn it out. If they don't use it every day, they'll be fine. We use it 68 hours a day, turning around all those stones in the cemetery. It just wears everything out.
Thank you very much. Town boards or committees? Any comments, recommendations?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance. Anyone else? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Article 20, Authorization to Appropriate Funds to the OPEB. I'm not sure if we're supposed to pronounce that. I'm pretty sure it's an acronym. The OPEB Trust Fund. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of hundred thousand from free cash to the other post-employment benefit trust fund.
Second.
Thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. We need to start funding our other post-employment benefits. It will improve accounts standing in the bond rating process when we go out upon our seniors and project this part.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, thoughts or opinions?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you, Mr. Ruchel. Any discussion or comment from the public? Don't be intimidated by the tall microphones. Hearing none, however. Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a comment? Don't say aye yet. Or nay.
Diana Haywood. Could I get some examples of what other post-employment benefits are?
Anyone from the town have an answer or know where to find it?
It's everything that we have to pay for our retirees that is not the pension. The biggest thing is health insurance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Article twenty-one is approved. Article twenty-two. Authorization to appropriate funds to the stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to pass over this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ruchel has seconded. This motion is not discussed. It's voted on immediately. And so, all in favor of passing over Article twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article twenty-two is passed over. Article twenty-three. Authorization to appropriate funds to the capital investment fund. Is there a motion?
Aye.
Mr. Rock Moderator, I move the town vote to pass over this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hadley, seconds? Uh, again, this is not a motion that is discussed. Um, huh? Not really. Uh. Uh, there's no discussion of a motion to pass over. Uh, so, all in favor of passing over Article twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article twenty-three is passed over. Article twenty-four. Authorization to enter into a permanent sidewalk easement. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Christopher Ruchel. I move the town vote to acquire by gift a permanent easement and temporary easement for public way proposed, including without limitation for the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of rights of ways sidewalks, walkways, driveways, drainage, slopes, grading, rounding, landscaping, and other, uh, perturances and/or facilities to enable the town to undertake the complete streets project. And for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto in, on, or under portions of the parcel of land located at one forty-four Preston Street assesses parcel one thirty-seven dash forty-one and approximately shown on a plan entitled Site Layout Plan, Preston Street Sidewalk Improvements, prepared by Malone and Mackroom dated December third, third, two thousand and eighteen, on file with the town clerk. And said plan may be amended in or incorporated into the easement plan in land within two hundred feet of the said parcel. And further authorize the vote of select to enter into all agreements.
Second.
I'm sorry, whoever's the second? Mr. Keller, second. Thank you. Is there an explanation or presentation?
Uh, would the DPDW director speak on this?
Mr. Keller, if you would, please.
Thank you. Um, when I first came to town, uh, one of the first things we had to look at was this, this sidewalk install. As we, I don't know if all the folks know, but this is a complete streets program fully funded through the state as to improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. We were awarded a hundred ninety thousand dollars for this and we, out of chapter ninety funds, are responsible to page the engineering design, um, which obviously started to put it in that part of the grant. So, uh, the town of West Boylston is a tier-three town and that includes, as I have attended, um, classes in trucks and actually construction of sidewalks and intersections in the city, on this time being Worcester. To make, to try to make a long story short, in order to hurry, um, at first look of the location of the sidewalk, I met with Miss Lucia and the engineers and the residents, that being the gardeners and Gilsons. The sidewalk was going to be installed on the north side of, I'm sorry, the south side of Preston. And there were many obstacles in the way, such as road width, trees that would have to be removed and especially probably a two-hundred-plus-year-old oak tree that would have to be taken down. Also, the slope and the lay of the land for a young child to be in the vicinity of the gardeners driveway or even at the school would have been very difficult to see the car or traffic or anything coming down, um, to be considered safe. So, through some negotiations or conversations with DCR, obviously the neighbors, and I don't know if they're here, but the gardeners and the Gilsons, I certainly thank you very much for your patience on this. So, uh, the biggest thing was the DCR is a land of butter for this project. I did have many conversations, not really negotiating. They're very happy to have this happen. The sidewalk location was moved to the north side of, of, of Preston Street. And it goes from Einhardton all the way down the north side in front of the Gilsons property, past the driveways of the gardeners whose address is One Linwood. It crosses closer to the school. It's much safer. The site distance will be greater. There's a couple of locations where the road will actually be widened, um, with the removal of a couple of trees and other, uh, perp, uh, perpuses such as the fire hydrant that has to be moved. There's a couple of telephone poles, um, that will actually bump around, uh, sidewalk will go around them. So they will not have to be moved. And they will be, um, push button, as we talked about before this lecture, getting laughs, push button control for, um, the walking light. So it's not a twenty-four-seven walking light. You have to press the button to activate and then it goes for approximately eighteen seconds for a person to get it right. So, uh, anybody that lives up there, it will not be going twenty-four-seven. Very happy with the progress of this, um, of this project. We have, um, actually, I should say, Nancy Lucia has sent a letter to Mas Dot because the contract was due to expire on June thirty. So I explained to, to Miss Lucia and also to, um, uh, Mas Dot that we would like to start this project once school ends. So we have asked for, and, um, assuming at this point that we're going to get a six-month extension, which is not necessary because it's only about a three-week project once it's started. So we will be ready, uh, for, for all students and otherwise before school starts. Uh, so again, uh, thank you everybody for your patience on this project. Certainly the board, uh, Nancy and the engineers, as well as the, um, the neighbors, the neighborhood. Um, very anxious to get this started. It's gonna make it a lot safer and I'm sure everybody will like it. So thank you.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any thoughts or opinions? Hearing none. Any discussion from the public?
Elisa Wellington sixty-six Walden Street. Do you have a map to show us of where this is gonna be?
Mr. Keller, if you could.
I don't know where all these answers, I'm sorry, that you're talking about.
They're around the corner from the school.
Yeah, we actually right across the street from, from this one, right from, from pretty much the lower parking lot if you go to Einhardton on the Norley side, which is the other side of the street. I did have a meeting with the engineers today and because this is a revision of the sidewalk being put on the south side of the street, we don't have a set of plans, but, um, we do have that initial concept of when both, both ideas were suggested. I obviously don't have it quickly and that will come as well that it will be in the town administration's office.
So this is a new sidewalk on the Major Edwards School side for the.
Yeah.
Further discussion or comment or question?
I'm Mr. David Gilson, one forty-four Preston Street. Just wanted to mention, um, I've been really pleased with how the town has communicated about plan and provided details about the plan. I'm also feeling very good about the plan itself. I think it'll change from my property quite a bit, but I think it's for a really good cause. Uh, traffic on Preston Street at that point can be pretty hairy. So to get people off the streets, I think it's the absolute right thing to do. Just wanted to say a few words of thanks. Thank you, Gary. Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion or comment. We'll have a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any others? Article twenty-four passes. Article twenty-five. This is a citizen petition article. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Mike Raymond, fifteen Emily Drive. I move to, uh, approve Article twenty-five as written.
Is there a second? Uh, whoever's seconding, would you please identify yourself? Thank you. Uh, is there an explanation or presentation here?
Mr. Moderator, at the present time, there's a limit on the number of retailers that can be established in the town of West Boylston. However, there's an unlimited, uh, limit on the other types of marijuana establishments that can go into the, uh, town of West Boylston, which includes our primary concern of marijuana cultivators that emit orders, decrease our property values, as well as our quality of product.
Thank you. Uh. Town boards and committees. Uh, recommendations? Opinions?
The vote of select, we voted not to include this article.
Selectment said not, are not endorsing. Okay, thank you.
The finance committee, uh, sorry. Uh, finance committee has a fairly extensive, uh, comment on this one. We have voted. I'm sorry. Uh, we voted unanimously and strongly. Uh, against passage of this article and there's a number of reasons for this. Uh, for those of you not aware, the town has already entered into a series of host community agreements with providers in power. And just to give you a sense of the revenues that we're talking about foregoing, if this were to pass, uh, two retail agreements that are in place provide for guaranteed minimum of a hundred twenty thousand dollars in revenue each year. And two of those agreements also provide for fifty thousand dollars a year in donations to, uh, charities in town or charities that service the town. So those alone are pretty substantial. Uh, there are also a number of agreements for cultivation establishments, uh, details of which I, I won't get into, but the town can reasonably expect something on the order of four or five hundred thousand dollars a year in revenues from these establishments. Second, uh, should the town choose to pass this article, uh, there are gonna be legal expenses and the last town council will comment on this. Uh, we would have to find a way, uh, to unravel the agreements that the town has already entered into. Uh, I don't know what those expenses are. I suspect they would be substantial. But, uh, again, the town council can comment on that. Uh, the establishments we've entered into these agreements with have already begun their efforts for licensure and planning. Uh, they have some expenses, I assume. Uh, we believe there's liabilities that we're gonna have to deal with. Uh, so again, other sorts of expenses. Uh, and on maybe a slightly more intangible basis, uh, what is this gonna say to the reputation of the town? And, and good faith, uh, entered into agreement with these companies. Uh, and if this article were to pass, now we're going to have to back out of a series of agreements. Uh, what does that say to any prospective, uh, companies that would choose to come into town? Can they trust the deals that are being made? And, uh, last comment here is, it's just a question of town will. This is the third time this has been brought up for vote. It's been voted on twice. It has been approved twice. And now citizens are coming back looking to, uh, retread. Uh, and again, finance committee voted unanimously against endorsing this. Paul Anderson, oh, sorry.
I, I think Mr. Rickell had asked town council to, um, say, say a few words about, uh, the, the legal implications of, of, of passing this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carolyn Lawrence of KP Law, Town Council. The proposal that is before you is looking to amend the general bylaws. Now, you have previously adopted a zoning bylaw to allow adult-use marijuana establishments in town. This proposal, as opposed to the next article, just seeks to adopt a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, that would prohibit all adult-use marijuana establishments within the town. There is precedent for this having occurred already. If any of you have been watching, uh, the newspapers, for example, in the town of Charlton, this has also come up in the town of Brewster. And the attorney general, as well as the land court has held that once a town has actually voted to regulate marijuana via the adoption of a zoning bylaw, you cannot undo that by the adoption of a general bylaw. So the only way to amend your existing recreational marijuana bylaw, zoning bylaw, is through the adoption of a zoning bylaw, which is what you seek to do under the next article, not this article. In my opinion, and based on, uh, rulings that have already come out from the attorney general's office, particularly in the town of Brewster case, where the town of Brewster sought to do exactly what, what this petition seeks to do, the attorney general in all likelihood would disapprove this general bylaw, even if it was passed by this town meeting, because of your prior adoption of a zoning bylaw to allow adult-use marijuana establishments.
Thank you. Nah. Sorry. Thank you for your patience.
Paul Anderson, the bylaws committee, uh, has voted to not endorse the passage of this.
The bylaws does not endorse. Thank you. Any of the town boards or committees? Discussion from the public?
Good evening, West Boylston. I'm Robert Lockhart, a non-resident requesting to speak.
Please do.
Uh, I'm the chief operating officer and, uh, owner of one of these cultivation establishments at two fifteen Shrewsbury Street. Uh, and we estimate our tax burden to the town to be upwards of five hundred thousand dollars, as well as we will be providing about four million dollars in new jobs. I hope this, we get this done.
Thank you.
Uh, Andrew Feehan, one-on-one Central Street. Also an associate on the zoning board and was partly committed to the setting of the zoning bylaws. Um, that's one cultivator. One cultivator saying that they're gonna give us a half million dollars. We got those agreements from two retailers saying they're gonna give us a hundred twenty thousand dollars each. And if anybody's been following the news, uh, the town of Lester, the first tax bill they collected from one retailer operated for half a year was two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, I don't know about you, but I know we got the superpedal of schools here. Uh, I'm assuming that the schools could probably use an extra million or two. Pedal library, I'm absolutely. I'm absolutely certain the library could use some extra money. And if we're going to keep trying to, uh, destroy this source of revenue, I think it's incumbent on the town to go ahead and pass the Proposition 2 and 1/2 over, why not make up for it? Uh, given the opinion of KP Law, is it, is it too late to move to pass over?
Uh, yes.
Given it's already in public discussion?
Correct.
But not too late to move for amendments?
No, but amendments need to be in the affirmative and in writing, we need to give the copy to the town board.
Yeah, we'll sit down and work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Feehan. Further comment from the public?
Mark Freeden, 8 Thyme Drive. Um, sort of regardless of the money involved, I was at the discussion of the next article, but this article doesn't actually solve some of the problems that the, that the Citizens' Commission, I believe, was concerned about, which was an odor from the, um, cultivation places. Um, this one also would remove all of the retail establishments in town, and apparently it's not really necessary to solve the problem that they're proceeding, that the petition. So I think that it sounds like this is not an article according to the attorney, and it doesn't need to be done to solve the problem they're trying to solve, which is an odor problem of the cultivators, which would be controlled on the next article when we can discuss what we get there. But this one doesn't seem appropriate, kind of, for what they're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Feehan. Further comment?
Mr. Moderator, Board of Select, all of the officials. My name is David Belina. I've been involved with law enforcement, started on July 1st, for 50 years.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you a resident of the town?
Yes, I am. I, I used to live at 37 King Moon Drive, and currently live at, uh, 182 Worcester Street.
Thank you.
Um, no matter where I live, I would not vote for this, even though it is the war of the land now, that recreational marijuana is, uh, legal. Currently, in the United States, we are virtually killing 20,000 people a year with alcohol. Does West Boylston want to be the next place where someone says, oh, this person killed somebody who was in the influence of marijuana, and where did you buy it? I bought it in West Boylston. The programs I've seen for, uh, over my career, uh, have not worked. The DARE program was a colossal failure. It's been documented, at the height of the DARE program, they had, their budget was over $10 million, it's now $2.5. I cannot see this amendment as a, something good for the town. As a former chief of police for 12 years, I know what everybody's looking at, and it comes down to the, you know, writing book. Everybody's looking at, oh, we can get X amount of dollars from taxation of, is the sale of marijuana. And I look at it as, I look at it as, how many people are going to die because someone bought marijuana in West Boylston and drove down a road, stoned and got hit? And my final comment is, it is a wonderful learning experience to pick up a dead body of someone who has died from use of marijuana. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
He's a tough act to follow, but I'm going to try anyway. Still seeing minors while I still live on Maple Street. Um, I have four questions. Uh, Mr. Recol, through the minors to Mr. Recol, where are the other proposed vendors located? Can we get that answered since we talked about that?
I don't have that information, but the contracts are with the town administration.
Okay. Um, perhaps to town council, do we have to back out of the agreements if this article or the next one passes, or would they be grandfathered in?
Carolyn Lawrence, moderator, still town council. Um, by adopting a general bylaw, it's going to have no effect on any of the existing permitted establishments that are either operational or obtained a special permit under your bylaw. There's no, unlike a zoning bylaw, where there is a, you know, a grandfathering mechanism, there is no similar mechanism when you adopt a general bylaw. But as I said earlier, I am nearly 100% certain that the Attorney General's Office will look at this, even if it passes tonight, will likely disapprove it because of your prior adoption of zoning bylaw, so it'll have no effect on any of your existing host community agreements or any of your operating establishments.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm not sure if anybody in the room knows this, but I thought that there was a cap on the number of establishments in a, in a community, and that's written into state law. Am I hallucinating, or is that true? No, I was not, I'm sorry. Please.
Mr. Moderator, your zoning bylaw only put a limit on the number of marijuana retailers. You did cap that in too.
Okay.
If you're thinking back to state law, and that there was at one point in time, a discussion under when medical marijuana was first legalized, there was supposed to be 35 medical marijuana establishments statewide, but that has since been repealed.
Okay. And my last question, since we have the CEO from the cultivator here, is it possible to have in the dress of the concerns raised by the petitioner here, specifically odor and quality of life? Because it sounds like he wants to be here, he wants to help our town, he wants to give us money, and I'm sure that if we ask in our host agreement to ask him to play nice in the sandbox, he will.
Mr. Lockhart, would you like to address those issues?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, in our facility, I can't speak on the other facilities, we are in all enclosed space, and there are new technologies that are coming out that are, uh, usually the, the equipment after people have complained. These are the systems that we'll be implementing from day one to scrub the air, and we'll take every action to make their no odor, uh, outside of our cultivation facility.
Thank you. Further discussion or comment from the public?
Andrew Feehan, 101 Central Street, I just want to add to that, that there's actually, there are actually state guidelines regarding things like odor, that the cultivators have to follow, the processes have to follow. Also, just to throw some statistics out there, uh, there are an estimated 37.6 million marijuana users in the United States right now. Marijuana-related deaths, that's last year, was zero. A lethal dose of THC is 15 grams, that would require smoking 238 joints a day. So, I don't think people are going to be dying in the streets unless we get some hipper smokers in town, and I think we do. For contrast, last year, there were 88,000 alcohol-related deaths. Thank you. Here, please.
Lisa Wellington, 66 Walden Street. I was at the last town meeting where we voted to allow marijuana establishments, and I was very surprised when I heard a lot of information about how much money this was going to bring the town, which would obviously benefit us. But I heard almost nothing about the cost to the town. I didn't hear the police chief talk about marijuana-caused accidents. I didn't hear anything from the Health Department about whether marijuana leads to addiction of harder drugs, and what the costs of that are. And I'm seeing the same thing tonight. All I hear are these wonderful, uh, financial benefits, but why hasn't, why haven't we heard from the Board of Health or the Police Chief?
They were invited to render an opinion or a comment, and they didn't do so.
So they've never commented on this?
They didn't comment tonight.
And at the last town meeting? We heard nothing from that side of the discussion.
They were given an opportunity to comment tonight, and they didn't. That's all I can say. Over here.
Bernie Dowell, live at 307 Prospect Street. I was a Massachusetts probation officer for 35 years. I began in 2010, I worked at the second, the first, the second busiest court in the state of any one, where the statistics gave, where I was in District 4. Born and raised in Worcester. In my 35 years, I dealt with addicts, I did not deal with juveniles. I dealt with hundreds and hundreds, actually thousands of people who were addicted to drugs and alcohol. I had never seen one positive attribute come out of the usage of any form of drug while I was in Massachusetts probation officer, but I did see an awful lot of heartache to families, friends, accidents. The state of Colorado was one of the first states in, in this country to legalize the, uh, recreational use of marijuana. Statistically, the rates of arrests for the operating under the influence of marijuana are three to four times higher in the state of Colorado than the DUI operating under the influences of others. If we're going to sell our soul for, even if it's a million dollars in tax revenue, well, I guess that's going to be it. Um, I'm very surprised that the Board of Select, because we have very, I, they're very honorable people, and I have a hard time believing that some of them, I know very personally, would ever vote to allow marijuana establishments in West Boylston. I have many law enforcement friends, I know Dave Galena very well from his years as a police chief and a police officer and a police sergeant. Anybody that's been in law enforcement for, for a extended period of time, or even a little bit of period of time, or tired, there's nothing, absolutely nothing, nothing monetarily. I guess that's what this town is basing itself on, it comes about of the sale of marijuana. There's nothing actually positive that comes out of the sale of liquor also, but now we're just going to add on to that by the sale of, of, um, of marijuana, have the people come in? Worcester's going to have over 30 establishments, my understanding, for marijuana. Let, I'm sorry, about 15, okay? And, and right up the street, a price and price drop is going to be a cultivation area. What is the problem with the people going there? Do you think that these places are going to, they're going to be in West Boylston and just going to be operating on the funds from people from West Boylston? I don't think so. But I'm saying, we haven't talked about public safety. The only person that has is Lisa Wellington and Dave Galena. Are we going to talk about public safety at all? What about the, the amount of accidents, the amounts of tragedy that's going down? Do you think the people that are coming into this town?
Mr. Bell, I need you to bring it in for a landing, please.
I'm sorry?
Bring it in for a landing, please.
Okay. Do you think that the people that are coming into this town to buy marijuana, some of them, you don't think are going to be under the influence of marijuana when they come into this town? I, I ask you again to consider, and we got the Attorney General, let the Attorney General do what she wants to do, okay? We have to show that we're our voice to protect our people, to protect our children, and to protect the people that come into this town. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Barbara White, I live at 16 Emily Drive in Angel Park Village. Uh, my house is the last house on Emily Drive. And if you go through the evacuation road, it goes into 100 Hopkins Street, Pappy Water. That's how close we are to a cultivator. And we know from research that odor is a huge problem. Uh, whether you look at Colorado, most recently Sterling, Choxett Street has had problems with odor. Um, they'd have a childcare establishment on Choxett Road for years, and the medical cultivated there, uh, I think they bought their now, they had a name change. They had such pervasive odor that penetrated the building, and it was penetrating the children's clothes, and the parents weren't wanting their children to go to this established business. I have a very bad case of asthma. Odors are deadly to me. I don't, from, from what the meeting we had at the planning board, we had a lot of concern about if this establishment, uh, is open and there is an odor problem, what's the enforcement? And that doesn't seem to be categorized. We are an elderly community surrounded by marijuana cultivators in retail. The retail doesn't seem to be a problem to us. The cultivators are a big problem to us, we're a fragile community where you're elderly. We ask for your consideration of our health and our lifestyle, style, and our property values. We've already had, we've always had resales of our homes very quickly. They don't even get on the market. We have had one now on the market for quite a long time, and I think it's because we have this issue surrounding us. Thank you.
Diana Abelhard, again. Uh, and I'd like to provide a little bit of balance to this discussion. So far, uh, among the detriment, um, to these marijuana has been the actions of people who are stoned. And I'd like to let everybody know that cannabis products are not the same as smoking joints, okay? Uh, in fact, they can be rather beneficial to senior citizens. I'm a senior citizen, and like the lady before me, I have respiratory problems. I've had five major sinus surgeries that won't operate on me again. So, you know, I'm not going to be, uh, opening up. Uh, I am a licensed medical marijuana patient. And I occasionally use a cannabis, uh, product for pain. I have some pain problems. I cannot form a fist. Uh, my fingers are swollen and painful, uh, and it's an injury problem, it's not arthritis. I have a transdermal roll-on that alleviates the pain. You cannot smell it. I don't get high from it, and it helps me. Uh, I also have a really bad problem that I've developed over the past few years with insomnia. In fact, I was hospitalized in March from complications of an episode with insomnia. Well, I have not yet found a cannabis product that totally meets my needs. There are a number of products that are out there, so, uh, you know, I still have to find one for me. And what I would like people to know is that cannabis comes in war forms, metal, ball, or a bomb. To admit that in 1969, I did smoke some, uh, watching the moon land there. I was also 19 years old. But the cannabis plants are then refined, uh, distilled or whatever, and what you end up with is something that is not a joint, it's not a flower pot. If you look through the, the laws.
I'm going to ask you to.
If you look through, through the laws, the laws, regulations on cultivation that is enclosed is indoors. Uh, as far as I can tell, outdoor cultivation is discouraged. And I will say that cannabis plants grown outdoors really are smell, but if they're grown indoors, you don't notice them. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Free.
Mark Freeden, I don't have any colorful stories. I was going to try to address one of the issues, uh, brought up by your previous talker, um, about the enforcement. about the enforcement of the existing bylaw. I'd like to take advantage of this podium and ask the, uh, the CEO who's here if they are aware of the requirement in the existing bylaw that there is no permitted odor allowed. And if that's the case, then aside from enforcement, if that's what they're gonna do, this sort of nauseates of the problem that we're in.
Yes, feel free to ask him. I guess you just have.
Either, or if they have either one for the champ, one more time to say it.
Kindly identify yourself, sir.
Sir, uh, my name is Rob Fuller, non-resident, respectfully request to speak. He's CEO of Omni of Massachusetts. It is, we are in an operating agreement process, community agreement with Thomas Boylston.
Sir, would you get closer to the mic and speak like more directly into it?
Is that better? Okay, I just wanted to speak briefly, I'm not gonna make this lengthy. Um, we do have a signed community agreement with Thomas Boylston. As the town council stated, this is coming. Um, it's just a matter of how we're gonna do it, and we're gonna make sure we're gonna do it the right way. There are several regulations by the CCC on odor. At the end of the day, if there are odors and somebody complains about the odors, the CCC's gonna be there within seven days and it'll be shut down. There's no questions asked there. They are standing on edge to shut these things down because they're, they're really regulating it and they want it done the right way. We have a permanent dispensary around the corner of Hartwell Street and Shrewsbury Street that's gonna open the doors in October. Like the gentleman previous stated, the revenues are gonna be at least the three percent plus, um, I don't know if anybody knew this, but the cannabis industry is taxed completely different. We are taxed, um, on gross sales. We are the only, um, business in Massachusetts that's actually taxed on gross. So they look at the gross dollars and then they tax them forty-eight percent. That forty-eight percent goes to state schools, it goes to public health, it goes to everything across the board, and then an additional three percent goes to the post-town, which is West Boylston. I sat here and listened to, I'm looking at my phone because I took notes, but you know, nine hundred thousand dollars of, of, of debt, carrying costs, that's, that's a lot of debt, you know, new fire trucks, uh, the salt spread had made, he showed his point where the money's gonna come from, and that's great. About two percent raises for the, to the town employees, and I'm a fan of all that stuff. I'm a, I'm, I'm an advocate of that. But at the end of the day, these people, the business, the town is run like a business. You need revenue to cover those added expenses, and they're either gonna come from businesses or they're gonna come from property owners. So those are the only two sources of revenue that the town has to generate funds to, to do this stuff. The cost of the dollar is declining, things are just getting more and more expensive. We can't control, we, we can't go around town and shut down all the liquor stores. It's just not gonna happen. All we can do is do the best job that we can to be advocates on, on how these businesses are run and, and just make sure that we're doing it the right way. I'm owning this company. I'm, I'm a resident of Shrewsbury, Mass. I own seven businesses in West Boylston. So we have fifty-seven employees, all moving around new businesses. We've got a huge investment here, and, um, I just wanna let everybody know, we, we spoke with Dennis in Angelbrook, and we offered a tour to our dispensary in Tinsburg so that they would, you know, get out of the bus and make sure that they realize that if there's no orders, there's, there's HVAC systems specifically engineered today for cannabis cultivation. So if you're not utilizing the right steps and there are problems, the CCC does step in, it's not just a town issue, it's a state issue at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could be cultivator, uh, comment? I'm just wondering if, if you want...
Sure.
Would you have the cultivator, Mr. Free?
Yeah. The CCC would, if, if there is a complaint about the odor, uh, the CCC would come and shut us down within seven days. Cannabis Control Commission. So we intend on being completely compliant, and the technologies of the new HVAC systems, uh, that are specifically defined for cannabis cultivation will be implemented from day one. Um, and just to the, uh, like the health, uh, really quickly, there are actually programs to get people off of opiates and the, uh, in the medical marijuana program. So if there is any, it's not a gateway, it's the, almost the opposite. It's getting, it's trying to help people get off of opiates and harder drugs than promoting the use of drugs.
Thank you. Commenters, well, we're gonna cover some new ground, please. New ground?
Mr. Moderator, yes, Patrick Lencardi, I'm not a resident, I respectfully request permission to speak.
Uh, and what is your interest in speaking?
I am an engineer who's permitted several marijuana facilities going back as far as two thousand fifteen and surrounding communities, so I think I can briefly add some input.
All right, we'll do it for you.
Okay, so, uh, as many of you may know...
Close, close to the microphone, please.
Thank you. As many of you may know, Fitchburg is a community that's welcomed these businesses with open arms, and we first permitted a cultivation facility in Fitchburg in two thousand fifteen. It's an eighty thousand square foot building that was originally a pants factory, a clothing factory. And for the first two and a half years of operation, they never even changed the sign of the street. It still said the pant factory sign, and everybody would go back and forth on the street day by day, not even knowing that a cultivation facility was there. So I, I've heard the concerns tonight, I understand the concerns, but I think a lot of it boils down to fear of the unknown. And, uh, Mr. Fuller certainly has strong ties to the community, proven himself as a strong business owner, has a great benefit to the town of West Boylston through the jobs he creates and the tax revenue, and I think it comes down to the town picking a good part. And the special permit process and the host agreement process are the town's ability to vet these people out, to make sure that they are entering a contract, is that what the host community agreement is, they're entering a contract with the right person who's gonna do right by the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I realize it's getting late, I've been very brief, uh, obviously very impassioned arguments on both sides of the issue here, but I just wanted to bring us back to one comment that I, I think was said, but wasn't revisited. I, I don't know how often any of you work with lawyers, but how often have you heard a lawyer say, virtually a hundred percent guaranteed? So, I, I think it's important for everyone to keep in mind the scale of this. It will not accomplish what it's designed to do. If you vote for this, you're just gonna be creating some legal interactions that you'll have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Some, some new ground.
Mr. Moderator, the town of West Boylston, all residents, uh, first of all, in all due respect to the...
I, did you identify yourself when I missed it? I'm sorry.
Richard Kelly, Fitchburg, Angelbrook Drive. In all due respect to legal comments, the board's comments, the selectmen's comments, I respectfully disagree with you voting or recommending the vote against this. And in all due respect to all those that are about to make money in, uh, in these facilities, they can make them in other towns, it doesn't have to be here in West Boylston. That was not part of my intended comments. This is. This is to all residents not adversely affected by these facilities. Let me explain. Yes, it's legal, marijuana. If anyone wants medical or recreational marijuana, you can go to various local existing facilities. That's not a big inconvenience. Understand that. Other than potential revenue, there is no good reason to have these facilities in our town. Just revenue? There's no good reason other than that. So now let's talk about that. Incremental revenue from these skunk odor-producing facilities, and by the way, the gentleman prior said fear of the unknown. That's not quite correct. It's fear of the known, the known smell. It's not unknown. Let me continue. Incremental, incremental revenue from these skunk odor-producing facilities at the expense of adversely affecting hundreds of abudders and neighbors is not what the town of West Boylston is all about. I therefore implore all residents who are not affected by these facilities and who live miles and miles away from these facilities to please be considerate and compassionate to all of those who would bear the brunt of the odors by rendering in favor of this article to prohibit these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep this brief, I'm Stephen Gilson, one forty-four Crescent Street. Just wanted to mention that, um, this boils down to be a legal issue. We're going to deny a vendor from marketing, selling legal services in this town on the basis of presumed disruption to the way of life. Invite you all to imagine what the world would have been like before Walmart arrived in West Boylston and try to compare the amount of disruption Walmart generates in this town compared to any marijuana, marijuana-related business. Something I'd like to point out is that, um, so far, the objections that I've heard have been fairly unsubstantiated, and I think if we're residents of a town that accommodates business, accommodates legal behavior, wants to do the right thing, then we should allow any legitimate business to operate in this town, particularly one that has, uh, track record that it has today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there something new?
I just have a quick question to everybody who's been complaining about, uh, potential odor. Raise your hand if you believe odor's gonna be a problem. Now, keep your hand up if you've actually toured a modern cultivation facility or even gone to stand next to one. So that would be a no from those two.
Thank you, Mr. Free.
Just make it clear.
Okay. Is this right online? All right. I'm here.
My name is Peter Sharz. I live in West Boylston at one eighty Worcester Street, right in back of the former McDonald's Old Fourno Restaurant. I'm gonna talk about marijuana on a different point. If we have, we have the issue of not in my backyard syndrome, and that would truly be myself in our condominium complexes right in back of the Old Fourno. But it's more than that that bothers me personally. It's the marijuana itself. This is not your grandpop's marijuana. Now, I don't know how many of you sitting back here at the selectmen's table in your college days did marijuana. This is not your college days marijuana. This stuff is dynamite. It is so strong and so protected that you don't get seeds with the premium marijuana because the, the growers keep those seeds themselves because that's the next crop. These products, these hemp plants have been developed by planting lots, amounts of it in, in controlled atmosphere, controlled environments. Then they harvest it, and they take the plants that show the greatest concentration of THC in the seeds. From those choice seeds, they plant the next generation. They major plant thousands of plants, harvest them all down to secure the premium seeds again, and it repeats and repeats until finally, the plants they have now are so strong that we are going to unleash this marijuana on our children, in our grandchildren. Adults can fend for themselves, but when it gets down into the high schools, down into the elementary schools, and it will, those children are gonna be taking marijuana that is so potent, it's going to alter their brains. There's an expression out there in Colorado, it's called waking bacon. That's an expression amongst the young drug users in Colorado. What does that mean? It means when you wake up first thing in the morning, you bake your brain by smoking another joint. And they're also considering out in Colorado, the introduction of psilocybin mushrooms?
Well, they're getting far afield here.
Well, the, the point of the matter is, the point of the matter is, you should also consider pulling this product back simply for the sake of the children. It sounds corny, but that's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, Kelsey Hug, twenty-nine Scarlet Street. Every one of us walked in here tonight knowing how we were going to vote on this. I move a question, if that's a possibility.
Let's do it. Thank you very much. Without shouting, just say, "Iron A," when it's time to say "Iron A." All in favor of Article twenty-five as moved, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The nays have. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Mike Raymond, fifteen Emily Drive. I move that the Article twenty-five be approved as written.
Article twenty-five is already...
Twenty-six, I'm sorry, twenty-six.
Would you like to state it again, just so we're clear?
I move that, uh, Article twenty-six be approved as written.
Is there a second? Forty-two seconds. Thank you. Explanation of presentation.
Just wanted to clarify a few things and also ask approval for, for this. Uh, we are actually, 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 yeah, for bylaw change, uh, to move, uh, marijuana cultivators, uh, not be allowed in an industrial area, or marijuana establishments being allowed in industrial area. And our primary concern, again, is odor, decrease in property value and the quality of life and in, uh, and environmental issues. I'm asking for protection for West Boylston residents. There are a hundred and thirty-two units in Angelbrook and a hundred and twelve units in Hillside. You're talking about money? Pay over one million dollars in taxes on an annual basis. You also just talked about how much money this is gonna be bringing in, uh, to the town of West Boylston, only for five years. The properties in the Angelbrook and Hillside, which is adjacent to the industrial park, hopefully will be around a lot longer than the five-year period. And I just ask yourself, I just ask one thing. If you wanted to live, if, if you had to live next to a marijuana cultivation facility, would you do so with the odors? And I was asked to raise my hand about, uh, uh, if I've ever been to a marijuana cultivation site. But let me just read quickly an article, uh, one, one town over in the town of Sterling. A central Massachusetts gymnastics academy is making a statement of what they say is an overwhelming odor on their property, and they're blaming it on a medical marijuana facility just a stone's throw away from them. The gymnastics school says, and is worried that this could put them out of business because some of their parents are so upset. They say the smell is making its way into the gym and being trapped inside. They're concerned because they say thousands of kids are breathing in the odor. Sterling Academy of Gymnastics has operated out of the gym for twenty-seven years. It wasn't until two weeks ago that parents reported a skunk-like odor that smells, that the smell has made its way into the gym. There's no odor, tell the people in West Boylston adjacent to this property.
Town boards and committees, would you like to weigh in on this?
I'm Paul Anderson. Bylaws committee voted to not endorse this.
Okay, bylaws does not endorse this, this article. Any others?
Finance committee recommends against.
Thank you.
What if you like to vote in favor of this article?
Uh, just in case you couldn't hear, the selectmen voted not to endorse the article. Other towns, boards committees, town board sort of committees? Uh, yes, this will be a two-thirds vote once we're there. It is a, it's a ballot, just a moment. It is a voter ballot, just a moment. As mentioned, this will, this will require two-thirds of a vote. Did the planning board weigh in on this matter?
The planning board has no, uh, staff.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'm sorry. Paul Anderson, chairman of the planning board, see his mic. No, the planning board did not vote on this. We felt that the legal antagonists were too unknown at the time, so the planning board has no, it's not important to comment on this.
Okay, thank you. Discussion or comment from the public, and I hope we're going to cover some new ground. So.
My name is Ruth Silver. I live at 71 Angel Brook Drive. My question is, on this vote, are we going, is it going to be a voice vote, or are we going to be raising our hand?
That is not yet determined. However, given that it's a contentious issue, we probably will end up counting if the voice vote is not clear.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because I'm just questioning on the previous vote because maybe the voices from people that are opposing, that want, that want to have these articles passed, that maybe our voices weren't loud enough, there may have been more of us, but our voices were not as loud as the nays. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments in just a moment?
My name is Jessica Cloria. I live at 355 Maple. I'm right around the corner from this. Just curious, in the article it says it would prohibit from the town's industrial zone. Does that mean that bylaws stated it could go elsewhere in town, or is this just limited, limiting it to the industrial area, or is that what they're zoned to be?
I think that's probably a question for the citizen petitioner, as to what it is you're trying to accomplish. Can you address that?
Okay, so my question-
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear anything you said. You have to like eat the microphone.
Right. My question is-
No, 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 the answer.
Oh, can I just clarify my question?
Oh, okay. Go ahead and clarify the question, yes.
Okay. So are marijuana facilities zoned as having to be industrial, and this is saying that we don't want them in our industrial area? Or can they be zoned as other facilities to be put in other places in town that are not the industrial area?
I suspect the planning board might have an answer for that.
They do. Paul Anderson, chairman of the planning board. The zoning bylaw indicates that marijuana establishments can be established in the business, the commercial, and industrial zones.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
So this, so far we've only spoken about facilities that are in that industrial area on Shrewsbury and Hartwell area. Are there plans for any other facilities in town currently? And would they be, so to say, so to speak grandfathered in with this new zoning bylaw amendment?
So anyone from the town who has that information or knows where to find it?
Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Murray Town Council. The proposal is just to prohibit these marijuana establishments within the industrial zone. Currently, the zoning bylaw does allow them in the business as well as the commercial like industrial zone, and that does not appear to be changing by this petition.
I think the question, if I understood it correctly, was, the context of the prior article and thus far in this article only indicates establishments in the industrial area along Shrewsbury Street and the Hartwell area. And I believe the question is, are there facilities planned for other industrial areas? Do I understand the question correctly?
I was also asking if the ones that are currently proposed to be in that area, would they be grandfathered in with this new change?
Objection compound. I'm sorry. That's the one question I'm trying to say. Does anyone know the answer to, are there other facilities planned in industrial areas besides the Hartwell-Shrewsbury Street area? Okay, I apparently know. Oh, wait, Mr. Crowley?
We currently have host community agreements for a facility right across from the solar field interstate, another host community agreement for two, two places on Hartwell. One is a grower, one is a dispensary. And then we also have a host community agreement in what was the Ilforno building for another dispensary. Those are the four people that have, businesses that have come forward. There may be others, but as of right now, those are the ones that we have agreements.
Thank you.
And then the other question, which was?
The existing proposals for the Shrewsbury Street area, which are the industrial zone that we're referencing, would they be still going forward with this amendment, or would that be, like, negating everything that's already happened?
Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Murray Town Council. When you amend the zoning bylaw, any use that was previously permitted either by a building permit, or in this case, by a special permit, before the date that the first ad appeared in the newspaper for the public hearing on this proposed zoning amendment, those are all grandfathered in. So if they had a building permit or special permit prior to that date, they can continue to operate. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Great.
I just want to clarify, Angel Brook Village and Hillside are an industrial area adjacent. Right now, there are three marijuana establishments going in just feet away from our, our residents. That's what we are objecting to. And if this is not passed, then it could be unlimited, every warehouse in industrial area considerably, conceivably be turned into a marijuana cultivation site.
Any further discussion? Hearing, Mr. Pfeiffer?
I did have one quick question that maybe some other members of the committee could help answer on our floor. When we were discussing the zoning bylaws, I believe one of the things we were told by the state was that if we tried to zone, if we approved adult-use marijuana establishments and then tried to zone them out of existence, I believe the Attorney General will step in and rezone it for us. Is that right? More or less?
Mr. Pfeiffer, would you take the microphone, please?
I believe the talk, I believe the talk was that you couldn't say it's allowed and then not allow it in any zones. That wasn't allowed to do.
Okay.
Linda Allen, 87 Angel Brook Drive. I was at the planning board meeting when we discussed this, and they had a map that they showed us that it was just going to change a percentage of the area where they are, established, will stay the same, but they changed part of the area so that we couldn't be overwhelmed a lot more. And I don't think that has been brought up. I think it just sounds like a general theme here. And if somebody from the planning board ever can explain that, because you did have a map and showed us that, I'd like that to be explained.
Paul Anderson, chairman of the planning board. The area right by the street at the corner of Hartwell and Shrewsbury, for example, a lot of that land is business zone, not industrial zone. And that was part of the concern of people who came to the planning board meeting, was that they thought they were going to be eliminating the possibility of marijuana establishment in that neighborhood. And that's not what this would accomplish. This is talking about just the industrial zone. We weren't, we weren't talking about rezoning anything. We were just presenting the fact that there's a business zone around that intersection, and the industrial area is away from it.
Okay, I understand that a lot of the clarification.
Thank you. Something new, Mr. Paul?
Yes, person, permission to speak again as an unresigned?
Go ahead.
Again, just touching on the subject, I think the issue is, Angel Brook is in an industrial zone. Not a lot of people live, reside in an industrial zone. The industrial zone also goes to the end of Hartwell Street, which is also the property that I own. As far as cultivation in that area, you won't even see it, you won't even smell it, obviously. It seems like most of the issues are from the odor. And again, I just want to reiterate the fact that if there are odors, there are certain forces out there that will handle the odors. All they have to do is request a special complaint to the-
Okay, thanks. I think we're looking for new ground here.
Yeah, just the new ground, because the industrial area at the end of Hartwell Street is the ideal location for this, and it's just still an industrial zone.
Thank you.
My name is Piri Yonatino. I'm a retired 17-year-old driver. I'd just like to explain something and have you people think about it for a moment. As was indicated, we have about 130 residents up at Angel Brook, and they're paying on an average, an average of maybe $5,000 to $6,000 a year for taxes. Now, you multiply that money, okay, on the basis of what our units have been afraid of, what concerns me now, should anything derogatory in nearby, okay, create an issue where we won't be able to retain, uh, review our money if we want it to sell, okay? What consideration would the town give us to reduce in our taxes? Not that we'd want that, okay? We would rather have a way of living which is conducive to what we thought we were going to have with retirement. So just give that some thought. It's important to get your health on that. It really isn't.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. State Representative 41, 21 Winklin Street, West Boylston. And I'm hopefully going to cover some really, really, really old ground here and bringing back November of 2016, when this commonwealth in this town, this town, the majority of this town, voted in favor of recreational marijuana. And then we've had two subsequent meetings in this building where the vote was exactly the same, that we voted that we were going to have recreational, cultivational distributors in our town. I feel a little bit like I'm in Washington, where if I don't like the rules, I want to just keep changing them, like a certain someone likes to do. We have voted on this and has been approved. It's in here in our town. Let's do what needs to be done.
Further discussion or comment? Just a moment. Just a moment, please. Before you're heard, Mr. Dow, I want to hear from the town council on the issue of the propriety of the zoning bylaw change without planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carolyn Murray Town Council. I brought up a point of order, although I'm not a member of this body and able to do so, but I wanted to bring something to the moderator's attention, and he felt it was important to also bring it to the body's attention. When we're adopting a zoning bylaw under Chapter 48, Section 5, a prerequisite to having a zoning bylaw brought before the body, it requires a report and recommendation by the planning board. What I heard the chairman of the planning board indicate earlier was that the planning board did not vote or did not have, had taken opinion on this. There is a case that went up to the appeals court involving the town of Falmouth, where there was a tie vote from the planning board, and essentially therefore, there was no recommendation brought forward by the planning board. And that bylaw still was adopted by town meeting, but ultimately was struck down because the planning board's recommendation is a prerequisite to being able to vote on a zoning bylaw at town meeting. So it is possible that even if this vote goes forward tonight, and even if this passes, then again, the Attorney General's office could disapprove the bylaw for failure of the planning board to submit a recommendation.
So I will ask the planning board to clarify, did the planning board not have an opinion on this?
The planning board did not vote on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Dow?
Forty down 307 Prospect Street. There has to be a record here. In November 2016, we had a statewide vote to allow marijuana and not allow marijuana recreation of marijuana. This town voted against it by a small majority, so state representative voted, "It's absolutely wrong." Two meetings after that, the next, the next two meetings, yes, we did, but if we had, if we had voted for it, we could not rescind it. We voted against it. That's where the law was. If you voted against it, they could not force it down your throat. Marijuana dispensaries are, are any such related items, okay? I was, I was, I was standing, have Mr. O'Kay stand corrected in November. For the record, we have to have it on here. It's a big, been a big issue. In November 2016, this town voted against it by majority vote. Mr. Raj is looking up.
Thank you, Mr. Dow.
That's what Raj talks about.
Is there any further discussion?
Cole Hamel, 16 Yorktown Road.
Mr. Hamel?
So I just want to clarify, if we vote yes to this law, to this proposed zoning bylaw change, assuming that we have to take it up to the appeals court and whatnot, but if we vote yes, what it will effectively accomplish is it will not remove the cultivators that currently have agreements, it will not remove any businesses that currently have agreements. What it will do is it will prohibit further businesses from being done, being made only in the industrial zones in West Boylston. They could still go into commercial zones, they could still go into whatever the other zone they were allowed into. Is that correct? Yeah, business zones, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. For those of you who couldn't hear, town council said, "Yes, that's correct."
Mr. Moderator, this is 41, a question for November 2016. This town voted, 2,082 people in favor of marijuana law, 2,261 against it, okay? So we voted against this initially, and you get it shoved down your throat, and you should not be getting it shoved down your throat, you voted against it. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson? Fortunately, we have another microphone.
Yes, that's correct. The town voted against recreational marijuana in the statewide vote. This town rejected, abandoned marijuana establishments, not once but twice. The planning board had multiple hearings on this, public hearings. We were having specific site plan review hearings, prescription permits. The town has had many chances, and they- The town has had many chances and they've always wanted the marijuana establishments with a sensible zoning bylaw, which we accomplished. So yes, we voted against slightly recreation of marijuana. But every single thing since then, we've voted for.
Thank you. I think it's appropriate to end public debate. I'm going to ask the tellers to prepare an account. I think that I might not make it out here live without doing voice vote, so. This is why you need to go get a card if you didn't have a card. It's why I said, go get a card. Because Article 26 was coming. I remind you that this article requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If you're a counter, would you please come up and get your assignment? I'm going to keep talking while you do that, though. I do want to reiterate that Town Council has pointed out that even if the two-thirds quantum is satisfied tonight, it is not clear that the requirements for having the zoning bylaw before you tonight have been followed. My opinion is the first thing to do is to go ahead and take a vote. So don't leave yet. Actually, if I had the meeting's attention for just another moment here. I realize you might be in an important conversation about this matter, but because the counters are being sworn in and hopefully not sworn out. The coral-colored piece of paper indicates a new voting location at the West Boylston Senior Center, 120 Prescott Street. So there's an election coming next month? Please remember the new voting location, please. And thank you. Okay, counters, can you please? Have you been assigned yet? Okay. Counters have been assigned. All right, are the counters in place? Are all the counters in place? Okay. This is the vote for Article 26, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. A yes vote will prohibit further marijuana businesses in the town's industrial zone. So that's what a yes vote does. Using your card, all in favor of Article 26, pull up your card now. Please keep it up until I tell you to put it down. If you have to change hands, change hands. We want to make sure that all the votes are counted. Please keep your card up.
Congratulations.
You go to rest.
Thank you, may put your cards down. We will take the middle votes in just a moment. All right, counters in place? If you want to vote no against Article 26, please raise your card now. If you're not a resident, you shouldn't be voting. Not that I saw a non-resident voting, just a moment. Keep your cards up. Make sure that all the votes are counted. Okay, you put your cards down. And we need a count. I would like to thank those who volunteered to count. Thank you for being a teller tonight. We appreciate your service to the town. We have a tally? Voting yes for 82 of you. Voting no for 83 of you. I remind you, required a two-thirds majority. So it's not a one vote difference in terms of making the difference. Because you need your two-thirds. Article 26 therefore does not pass. We don't adjourn town meeting, we dissolve. Is there any other business we need to discuss? In that case, that will entertain motions to dissolve. Shall we mind this must still move? Two seconds? Mr. Anderson, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
We are dissolved. See you next time.